And we're going to quickly have opening remarks. Plenipotentiates, do I have a volunteer for opening remarks?
Yes.
Please, here.
For dear Father in Heaven, we come before the beginning of this meeting and we pray that the council will be able to understand and know the issues that stand before them. They will be able to work together to come up with the best decisions for our community and the citizens that live here and support them. We pray that as citizens that we will be able to be supportive and understanding of the things going on and be involved and work together for the greater good of our city. We are truly blessed to live in such a beautiful place touched by Thy hand. And this evening we pray that Thy Spirit be with us in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen. Feel right for the plenipotentiates.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we need a motion to adjust our starting time?
I'll make a motion that we amend our starting time to eight o'clock PM.
Set by Paul, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Dale PD, be excused for a minute. Thank you. We're going to start with the scholarship decision to establish a resolution. Excuse me. Did I call? Thank you, I do. Public forum, sorry, those of you who came for public forum, if you'd like to address the council, if you'd take a moment, state your name.
Yeah, I just got a couple of things I'm going to resolve.
What's your first name for the hook line?
Huh?
First name?
Don Hook.
Don Hook, thanks.
Anyway, I'm not really in favor of HOB or...
HOA?
HOA. I've seen a lot of them happen. My father and mother got involved in them. And it worked for a period of time until people start moving on and then it just falls apart. And you get, it just gets opened up to the public, can't handle it. So it don't really stay a senior thing. They were seniors when they moved into these other... I really definitely am in favor of that. And another thing is, what kind of impact do you put that many people there, such an happen, the traffic going down that bridge? And now we have a heavy load going down there now. So that's going to increase the traffic tremendously down that one road. And then one other issue is the water thing. If we're already low on water and stuff like that, why are they allowing this much development, which is taking a lot more water, which is going to cause a whole bunch more expense to get the wells and all this in, which is going to put an impact on people. Higher water bills, like the one that did on ours, the water went up and then also the sewer went up because of all these developments. And so, you know, us being retired and everything, we moved up here in retirement, so we, you know, so all this increase in money takes a hit on people that's retired, you know. So, I mean, you know, it's like $10 here, $10 there, and $10 there. You add it all up over a period of time, it's quite a bit of money. So, that's...
I appreciate your comments. Thank you. Make sure that that's noted. Jim?
Two parts. One, we haven't heard anything about what's going on with the potential stoplight down the bottom of Elk Ridge and 191...
198.
198. Is there any update on what's happening with that in the state or the county?
The closest I've come was, I've had several discussions with the Region 3 office in Orem, recommended several different things. They did the initial study and then apparently they didn't get them, they didn't do it correctly is what they told me, and so they were going to redo it again. And that they didn't think that there would probably be a stoplight immediately, but they had some other recommendations, but they were continuing to do a second study. And I asked, is, are you doing the study during the hours when, this was after school it started, first study came before school it started. And so at that point, I'm still waiting to hear back. In fact, I was in train call last Friday and I forgot to get it done, to be honest. But I got a contact there and we will continue those contacts. There are several other options that I think we have for us to push that issue, but we're going to try hard to do some things with that.
Brian?
Talked to Cody today, I guess he's been talking to people about this. And the feedback that he gave me was that there really seems to be some pressure to wait until the other road goes through. And whether they go, I said, you know, this is a couple of years away before we have the Elk Ridge Boulevard going all the way through to Benjamin. And I said, if we wait till then, could other accidents happen? So, you know, this seems to be the way it's leaning right now. Of course, it could. Of course, it's not here.
Yeah. It is, they're wanting to do that, but there are, there's several other things I've been working on with different groups. I've been talking with the school district because of all of the traffic. We want them behind us on this. We talked with Salem City. I'm not sure where they're at on this because their studies indicate that you put a traffic light in and accidents increase. But they're talking about slowing the speed limit on the other side, the pace inside to maybe 40, that's starting sooner.
Yeah, that's one of the thoughts too, you know, maybe with that sporting, 40 mile an hour speed limit west, slow that traffic down.
And that's a possibility. I've also been talking with Ludland Hills Mayor. I've been in touch with several different groups trying to address the issue of not only putting in that stoplight, but trying to get Elk Ridge Drive at least from APA, the school down there, let's say, on Canal Road widened all the way to High Line Canal. I've got several things in the works that I'm trying to pull together, including support from the various agencies and cities in the area. And that might impact whether or not we get that stoplight sooner than later. When, when that Salem Parkway goes through, they've got to put it in. But the technicality is they don't put it in until after they've done a review, after all the traffic is moving. We're trying to see if we can go around it.
Okay, thank you. Number two, talk concerning the senior overlay, we're discussing where's the park down there. I think it fits the community well, there's a demand for it, a need for it here, we don't have those types of things here. But a sense in the city council, like we see code challenges, maybe that's going to be reviewed and resolved if there are before this goes forward, any further. Any other thing is a private road, I have a real concern about that. The city won't be involved in snow removal, a lot of those I've seen, you get ice buildup on them in the winter time, plus the Mara, so it makes a real challenge for emergency vehicles to get through there, and there's the fire trucks. And my suggestion would be that that should be a public road right from the start, everything in there should be. Just allow for emergency vehicles to be in there because there's going to be more calls in that area than most normal lane routes because of seniors from time to time.
Please.
In regards, in regards to that, if it's a 55 and over, most of these people are going to have children come visit them. And there was no parking on side streets, right? After November?
Any street.
Any street. So, I can see this being a problem there. Where is caregivers or children, whoever, where are they going to park? And another thing is, I watched the traffic on Elk Ridge Drive and we're talking about how they need to put a stop sign down at the end. All that traffic that's going down there is coming past up here. And I have watched, and we have no sidewalks or anything going down on Elk Ridge Drive. I've seen children trying to cross there. I've seen strollers and mothers trying to jog down through there. It's highly dangerous. Now, we're going to add another subdivision, I understand, I, I think it's, it's probably needed, but I'm, I'm wondering, what, is there supposed to be a trail there, a bike trails, there's supposed to be anything that should go down on Elk Ridge Drive to accommodate bikers, strollers, children? Every day I see near misses.
It is part of a master plan, it's a matter of where we're going to, when we finally have enough dollars within those impact fees and to be able to put them in. We continue to put them in, we'll continue to, yes, that is a very important area.
It's a very, it's a very busy road, very, very busy. And I think it should be, just like that stop sign or the light down there, it should be priority all along that road because it's so, so many, so much traffic coming in and out.
That's what we're, yeah.
And I, I know it's, it's a budget issue, but somehow it's got to be, especially if there's new housing that's going to come in on the golf course and along on the other side, that's going to be more houses and more people trying to come in and it's a terribly, terribly, I, I watch it out my bedroom window. I watched five children trying to cross the other day and I ran out of my house trying to get them across the road.
We're trying to, with this development, if it were to go through, whether it's this development or we just develop it as it's currently zoned, you will have equal, probably equal amount of traffic coming out of that property, whether it's senior housing or regardless. And whoever puts that in will complete part of that trail system right to, from Elk Ridge Drive down to, no, I'm sorry, park right down to Elk Ridge Drive. So that would be widened for, it's just very preliminary, I only learned about it about two weeks ago, the possibility of a significant, a significant grant to maybe even add a trail going from that intersection, clear out to the end of, well, we're going to Gladstone. So that's another possibility that's in the works, but we're still a ways away to get the detail we need for that.
The cars come off that hill awfully fast.
They do, too fast.
And they don't stop. There's three cars I watch every morning at 5:30 that, that go down that hill and they do not stop.
Give me the make and model.
I will get their license by as soon as we get...
There's an illegal parked Lexus outside, I know. You want the make and model and the front door number?
I'm just saying, without the traffic and, and coming off that hill and you're coming in a subdivision with cars coming in and out of there, it's got to be, it's got to be controlled where the people can be on it and the cars can be on it. It's a bad, it's a bad area, it's as bad as down there when you're trying to get on that other road. I see it every single day, I watch these cars and these kids and, and women, a lot of joggers, women with strollers.
Okay, appreciate all the comments, we're going to need one more, Erin?
Please. I wanted to address the council tonight specifically about some things that I've heard in the community, to other issues before that though, just from being here tonight. Brittany, with the roundabout, you might want to consider like other fire vehicles that may have larger ones in bigger cities that may come to our aid if we were to need it, that to fit with the roundabout, especially if ours very busy, wouldn't it help? And with the water, I think you may want to talk to the landowners and people who might possibly develop up there and see if there's interest in them helping the city with that. There always could be, there has been in the past. But what I came to ask the council tonight, is there rumors going through this city that I think the public has a right to know there of things of money embezzlement, water bills being gifted to themselves and others?
Can I, can I just take it real quick? One of the first things that comes to my mind when I hear this is rumors. Rumors have a source.
That's why I'm here.
And that's the frustration for me.
I understand that.
And we have dealt on the proper levels with the state, we have dealt with the attorneys, and we have moved forward according to the attorneys, according to the state, even the auditors I spoke with today in the appropriate fashion. Could we have done something differently? Yes.
Are the consequences being done in an open meeting? Whatever's decided in a closed meeting should be done openly?
It was, no, those, that decision was, was done in a closed session.
Right, but anything happened to it?
But Erin, the consequences for this individual's actions will, will be determined by the attorneys, the auditors, and the people that make those decisions. As soon as we became aware of the issue, action was immediately taken, that individual resigned.
With both benefits?
No.
I was just asking about the rumors and then the source.
And that's, that's, that's a problem, it's the rumors. But all of those things are being dealt with by the people who have the authority and the ability to do something. I can't go and say, you get a 30-year license, it doesn't work that way. So, so that's why we have dealt with and given that information to the people that need to as soon as we became aware of it. I mean, we found, I found out, I think it was on a Monday, and we had an emergency council meeting like the very next night.
So, the proper authorities were the, were who?
State auditors.
Right now, the proper authority was me. I started this issue after I became aware of the issues. And I'm going to stop the discussion about it now because it has been dealt with and, and I am frustrated that rumors have sources and I don't know what those sources are. And that's the frustration to me.
And I don't know what they are either, man.
Because it was closed session, the only option is there was some information within staff initially before closed session was held. But since it has been held, that's where I'm going to leave it.
So have any other citizens come to the council to ask about that in a meeting?
Nope, you were first.
So I'm coming to the source, I'm not being the source of rumors. I think the public has a right to know if that happened within appointed position.
I'm, I'm going to leave it where it is.
Well, I think it's, it's probably appropriate to note that the state auditor will be doing, doing that auditing, auditing soon. And then that will be reviewed and whatever, he will decide on whatever action that he feels is appropriate for...
And so will that audit be made public to the citizens?
That's on the basis of the, of the state auditor, you can take it up with the state auditor, but I, I won't take it any farther than that. Not without a court order.
So it might be...
I've done what I felt was the appropriate thing to do as administrator.
How am I challenging you?
Someone is.
And that's why I'm here to tell you that, is that maybe something should be said by the council or the mayor.
I'm not saying anymore, we've already discussed it to the extent we might do. This, that part of, we're through with open forum, we're going to move ahead. Scholarship decision to establish a resolution. Is there any further discussion or recommendation? I still feel it's a good idea that the city come across as being supportive of our students. That's why I brought forward the idea, I've had several residents indicate that they would be positive, I appreciate it, Nelson's position, and, but that's my recommendation.
I think the way that it was presented, I think it's fine, I don't see any problem with it personally. And I think that if that's something that we could do through private donations and that you have that citizen, community, citizen committee that primarily will operate that, I would be in favor of that.
Any further discussion or motion?
Probably might as well bring it up at this point, I think, and decide what the, what the group feels and then it'll, there'll be another, another group in here after, after January. But I would, I would move that we proceed with a resolution to establish a scholarship fund for Elk Ridge city citizens.
Is there a second?
Second.
By Paul, all those in favor?
I, I, but can we make that on that motion that funded by private donations and administered by a community, like, because the applications and decisions are all going to be made by a committee of residents and not city council?
Yeah, but this is, this is just to create the resolution which can include all of those, those provisions. Right now, we just want to know, will the council help us with a resolution? And it doesn't have to be passed, unless it meets the council's approval, wouldn't it be passed? So I have a, a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye. Those opposed? Aye. Was that a three, four to two, four to one? Is that correct? Thank you.
Next, we're going to appoint, we've discussed this in the past, but we technically need to appoint Jim Butler as our current treasurer. Is there a motion? We need a motion to do that.
I'll make a motion to appoint Jim Butler as the city treasurer.
Is there a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay. Due to qualifications and not having previously held that position for counting experience.
Exception noted, carries four to one. Senior overlay zone request approval recommended from the planning commission. Any further discussion? Any motion?
Oh, is there?
I think, I think we have kicked it around, I think it is open for the discussion. Erin, I think what we're, if I understand it right, what we're looking for here is just a, an authorization or a recommendation to, to approve the, that overlay for this zone. I was at the planning commission when it was presented last week and they discussed that at length, it seemed to be the consensus of all of those there, I didn't hear any negative that was presented there, that they felt like this was something that fit well in that, in that area and that it could be a positive part of what we want the community to look like, you know, to have these, have different areas fitting different demography, demographic, ages and so forth. And their recommendation was that they forwarded it to the planning commission for, for approval. But, and I think things that were discussed and even some of the concerns, I think, you know, we discussed originally when it was first presented, we probably are going to need an easement, at least a 25-foot easement down that side, and we need to establish some parking on this upper section of the park. You know, the concern that you brought up is a, is the same one Jim brought up also, that you need some place as kind of an overflow where they, where they can park to, if they're, for visiting and so forth. I think that's something that could maybe be worked out, you know, that, that we make a parking area there.
Is anyone ready to make a motion to approve it? If not, we need to move it on to, for more discussion?
Okay, I, yeah, no.
Although what we're asking for, is there any motion to apply the overlay zone requested?
I'll, I'll make that motion because I think it's, it's good to bring it up, then you see where everybody sits on. So I make a motion that we approve the senior overlay zone change request as discussed and presented this evening.
Is there a second? If there is a little second.
I'll second.
Second by Paul. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
It does not pass.
Okay.
Three to two.
Mr. Mayor, is there, is there any way I can have a chance to address some of the concerns that were brought up during the work session? I can be brief, I know you all've got a huge agenda, but I just, I thought that I would have...
More of an opportunity.
... a bit of time here because, I mean, for something that fits so perfectly with the code, I just wanted to address some of the concerns. And really what it comes down to is, yeah, I can definitely see where you're coming from with the density issues. I was chairman of the Pleasant Grove Planning Commission, I sat there for three years, I've been on your side of the table, I, I know how it is and I run for city council and things like that. But the reason why projects like this would require a little bit more density, which is really not, not a ton more, but it's a little bit more, you know, it's still less than 40 acres, is the nature of a senior housing project, you're going for traditionally a little bit more of an affordable unit. And if we were to decrease the density on this big piece of property, which is a valuable piece of property here in Elk Ridge, very desirable zip code, to something like third, equivalent to third acre densities, which you'd be lucky to get, you know, 30 or 40 units on there, you'd be trying to sell senior housing, people that are living on a fixed income, you'd be trying to sell them a three-bedroom, two-back unit for $400,000. And that just, it just doesn't, that just doesn't make sense for, for that kind of demographic. Now, we all know, I mean, the mayor brought it up in the work session, we've had multiple discussions with people in and out of the city and in Southern Utah County, that there is a huge demand and we've, you know, all, all the communities are getting ready for it. I know it's been a topic here in Elk Ridge before, I've seen the minutes, I've seen the notes on it, where I know it's, it's definitely going to be, be needed here. I mentioned earlier about just some of the basic market research that we've done. And people are ready to move on this and we are, we are ready to provide this type of housing and meet the needs of the people that are already living in this community and the people that want to live in this community. So I ask you, you know, to, to consider that when it comes to the density issue, that, you know, moving just from, you know, just, you know, not even 40 units to the acre, it will still meet and feel like Elk Ridge. It will feel, like I mentioned earlier, it will feel less dense even than even the low density of, you know, three, four units per acre because of the single, single-story nature of the, of the development and with all the big open spaces, not just the main three, four acre space in the middle that we'll keep natural, but also the pocket parks that will also be there. And as far as parking, traffic, any traffic engineer will tell you that this is the most desire, this is one of, if not the most desirable type of development that the city could want when it comes to traffic impact because of the, the trips generated per day when they fit into the, they fit into the calculator, you're talking about a significantly smaller amount of traffic that's going to be generated by 55 and over community.
I don't think so.
But, you know, traffic engineers will, will tell you, you know, because they don't have kids, you're not going to school and things like that and...
Everybody's going to have a car.
And, and, and...
Plus the people going to cover the business.
But, but it will be a minimal impact compared to, you know, say, even if this were a single-family, third, third acre development, you're going to get more impact from traffic, from third acre housing, single-family housing than you would senior housing. Any traffic engineer would be able to verify that. So I don't want the traffic to be concerned and the parking to be a concern because there will be two car garages in each unit and each of those will have tandem parking, they'll have their own driveway space behind that. So it should be more than accommodating for, for visitors and we wouldn't have to worry about people parking on... about people parking on the street. The, the public-private road issue, that's something that we can definitely work out with the city. I'm on board with you. If we think there's a concern there for emergency personnel or something like that, we can look at that. That's a viable concern if it needs to be widened or whatever, if we need to change that cross section.
So, yeah, there were, really, that was my number one issue is the private road. Number two, and this was something we didn't even talk about previous to this, each year when we have our city celebration, we're talking about a development right next to the park and where does all the overflow parking go? All the streets around here and where that private road, I can just see the tow truck coming in and hauling people off and the amount of grief that that would cause besides the fact that there are other issues with being a private road. But if that can be changed to a regular residential road, as I read the code here, it says the senior housing overlay can be applied to the R-12 and the R-15,000, not, the density isn't different in the 12 versus the 15, it can be either or that this can be applied. And so really, at this point in time, my only rub is with your private road. Just so that you're aware of that, okay?
Yes, sir. Mr. Rabbit, I don't want that to be a sticking point for you to, to give us, you know, a non-affirmative, you know, vote because it's something that we would gladly work out. There will be a development agreement. That development agreement, every one of y'all is going to be able to read that. We can specify, we can write that according to the verbiage that y'all feel fit. I don't see this as being some kind of a gated community feel, like very exclusive where if there's a festival at the park, people are going to wonder, am I going to get towed for parking here? And I'm, I'm, I'm saying in the HOA agreement, we can write it in there where they can't just call and tow people as long as they're not parked there overnight or something like that.
I'm speaking from my own experience because my office in Payson is adjacent to a senior housing development where the road is quote "private."
Yeah.
And I've had clients towed, even though there's plenty of room and they're not blocking anything because they don't want to park in there. And so, I mean, I know what your intent may be.
Yeah.
Typically with the, the older crowd, they have more time to pursue some of these things whereas me, you look around this group here, there aren't too many, with the exception of the high school kids that have to come here for a class, there aren't too many young people that come to these meetings. And the reason for that is they're too busy running around with their kids, doing their thing. And so, I don't, I mean, that's.
If that means making it a public road, I'll commit to you right now to where we'll make that a public road if that makes, if that's what it is.
That's my only issue.
Because I can't, I'm just saying, I can't, I can't move on to throw money at a preliminary plat and get my engineers designing that road until we get the concept approval and buy the property from the flowers.
All right, so with that in mind, just bear with me here, Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the senior overlay zone change request, subject to there being public roads throughout the entire development.
Can I have on that the, the exception that we've asked for that, that we look at whole 15.49 acres and the density of all that instead of the six, maximum six acres at a time?
You get all that, Melanie? All right. She's good. There been a motion?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Three to two. This would pass. Moving on. Harrison Heights Phase Four Lot Line Adjustment for Lot Number 23. Any more discussion? If not, a motion please.
After you, Mayor.
I will make a motion that we approve the Harrison Heights Phase Four Lot Line Adjustment for Lot 23.
Second.
I second it.
By Dale, all those in favor?
Any other discussion real quick? You remember, I'm the one that voted no on this before because this issue wasn't addressed. Now it has been so far.
The roundabout issue.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. Number five, motion, Harrison Heights Phase Seven, final plat approval. Discussion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Harrison Heights Phase Seven and final plat approval.
Second.
I'm sorry? Brittany, second?
No, I didn't second.
I'm sorry?
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Would you sign in? Sir, my lawyer, your person?
No, but there is a Mylar on Phase Four. This we're doing, it's something we love, so when it's finished, we'll win Mylar.
Number six, amendment to preliminary plat for Elkridge Meadows Phases Five through Ten.
I make a motion that we approve the amendments to the preliminary plat for Elkridge Meadows Phases Five through Ten.
A second?
I'll second it.
By Nelson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll abstain.
Okay, one abstained, four carries. Number seven, amended development agreement for Elkridge Meadows Phases Five through Ten. Discussion?
I have a few things on this still that we need to talk about. Yeah, I'm trying to fish. Okay, um, let's start with payments on the neighborhood park and lieu payment. Had a couple of issues regarding that. The two-point, close to two acres, 1.94 in terms of what the park is. There was one appraisal done for $100,000. I think that is super low for two acres in Elkridge. Incredibly low.
Holy Spirit.
$100,000, $50,000 per acre.
I think $150,000 per acre in Elkridge. You would, you would drive the developer around.
I didn't say $150,000. I said the appraisal came in at $50,000 per acre, which is super low in Elkridge. There was one appraisal done by the developer and I think we're giving away our land. That's our land, that's our two acres of park. And if we want to sell it back to the developer, great, but it needs to be at fair market value. And I think that $100,000 is not fair market value.
So what?
I think we need to have another appraisal done or we need to negotiate it in that. That's one thing in this contract that's not been negotiated on. The developers come and said, here's what we're going to do, and we put this contract together, but there's been no negotiating.
So, you know, all I've done is provided everything that I was asked of me, whether they be bids, appraisals, all that stuff, I only have control over that.
Right, no, and that's fine.
And it was appraised with comps all in the area. I'm paying less than that, I paid way less than that for Elkridge Meadows to begin with. Obviously, that was a little bit of distressed sale. I'm paying less than that for all of Harrison Heights. So everything that I bought up here, I'm paying less than that for another project that I'm looking at right now. So it's easy to say that, but I can only go off of, and the price is only going off of what you can find for comparable, like.
So, are you willing to sell it for that amount? We can make a deal right now because I'd be happy to buy it for, you know what I mean? I think it's worth way more than that. So if you think it's worth $100,000, you should be willing to sell it for $100,000.
So there's more to it than just that. It's the improvements, it's all the other things that go along with it.
No, I know it's unimproved land, I know it's unimproved land. Unimproved land, two acres of unimproved land in Elkridge is worth more than $50,000 an acre.
Again, you're saying that without, you're saying you haven't had any appraisal, you're saying that. I hired a professional appraisal that talked to me and said, look, I need an appraisal on this. All he can do is pull the comps of everything that's sold. And I'm telling you what other things have sold for, it's easy to go out and throw a blank, oh, I'll just buy that. But it's a different thing to have an appraisal on hand and say, well, this is what.
If, if you look at lots that are currently selling in Elkridge.
It's not a lot. You're looking at it the wrong way.
Okay, but that lot can have 10 houses developed on it. So it can become a lot.
After all the improvements are done.
Yeah, but that's not hard. I mean, not, not that it's not hard, Dean, I didn't mean that in the wrong way. I mean, what I mean is, you do that every day. No, what I mean is, you do that every day.
Sure.
And all the lines are there so the connections can be put in.
I have provided everything that was asked of me.
And that's fine, I'm saying from a city standpoint.
What you're saying is that we ought to get an appraisal?
We need to get an appraisal or we need to negotiate this and all the terms of this because there's quite a few terms in here that I don't think are beneficial to the city.
Why don't we move that we make, we do a second appraisal at the city's council?
Yep.
I'll find out if.
Go through the other issues first.
So help me understand why we are giving you $138,000 to landscape the trail for when, and it says we're giving that in, and additional density. Why are we giving both of those things?
We're not giving $138,000. That's what, that's what it's going to cost him to landscape the trail.
It says a partial offset of development cost for landscape trail in Elkridge Drive.
Okay, let me, let me go back and tell you the history behind this.
Okay.
Then you'll understand it. So Elkridge Meadows Phases Five through Ten, when it, when it was conceptually approved, this is back in 2010, that we conceptually approved it, the trail, the landscaping on the trail, the city recognized that there was additional cost to that landscaping. We weren't requiring that of other people on trails to landscape because we end up with this wider area. Most, most trails, you don't have this, this large wide area around them to landscape. It's just left, they, you know, Phase One, the little spots where the trails cut through, they were just left as natural open space. And so the city recognized that and agreed to waive the park impact fees on the development to help offset that cost. Okay? So now, what we're at is that now what, what Dean would like to do is, he's saying reinstate the park impact fee to, to help pay for this park, this, this park in lieu fee so he doesn't have to pull as much cash out with that. The, the benefit to the city by doing that is that we get the money quicker to be able to spend on the other parks because it will start with, it will start with, I said it at building permit number 30. Dale was talking to me beforehand and asking, well, why 30? And it, and it just has to do with the timing of this. I didn't know how many building permits would be in place by the time we got to the development agreement. So I'm just trying to set it as something I know that we're not going to be up to right now, we're at like 25 or 26. So we, Dale was saying, well, you know, as part of that vehicle, can we say to go to the current, whatever the current end of the development agreement or development agreement, the building permits is and, and adjust the numbers that way. And so basically, as we have building permits accrue, we have that 20, 23, 993 coming in with each building permit.
Yep.
Towards that offset.
Okay.
So, so basically what we're doing is reinstating the building, the park.
Park fee.
Impact fee. And that's going to pay towards this park. So if you don't want to reinstate the park impact fee.
No, no, I get where, I get we're reinstating the park impact fee, but then we're going to credit it towards the developer's payment to us.
Of the park. Yeah, of the park, for the park.
So, yeah, so I don't, so every house that's built in Elkridge has a park impact fee. So, but we're saying in this case, we're going to give that impact fee back to the developer.
No, we're not giving it back to the developer, the city's keeping it.
Well, the city's keeping it in lieu of him paying us money for the park.
Correct. But you have to, you've got to go back to why that impact fee was, why it was, we made a specific decision not to assess that park impact fee on Phases Five through Ten because we were requiring the landscaping of the trail, which was above and beyond what we were requiring anybody else to do.
But the landscaping was for additional density, your fee is 985.
No, the landscaping wasn't for additional density. Your additional, your additional density comes from open space and parks. There's nothing in there that says that you have to.
Okay, so we're saying this.
Land is the trail for additional density.
Let him finish, please. You go ahead and finish what you were saying.
Well, that's, that's it.
One of the things we need to remember here, this development is also part of Phases One, Two, Three, Four, and Five, and some of that open space and those impact fees and so on and so forth, we're not saying that all of those lots, those impact fees that were, are going to be collected for those lots were only going to go to that one little pocket park. It was actually designed in its conception as part of this PUD to help cover the cost of all of these. I mean, that's how Randy Young put this thing together. And if you want comps on the value of the property, we have to have.
I know we do.
So, you know, and that comes out to between $69,000 and $70,000 an acre.
Yeah, that's.
We paid for it, we already got it.
I know we do.
So.
That's what I'm saying when they say there's no.
On the other property.
Right across the street.
Right across the street. We already have, and I didn't know if we're going to disclose that information.
So, so the question is, so just talking with value, and I didn't know anything about that. Again, like I said, I did everything I was asked. This has been going on for a long time, that's something you wanted, it would have been nice to do that. I mean, we've done a lot of work, Shay has busted his butt on this thing with hours and hours, we've been talking about this forever. Now we're dropping it now. But the question is, I mean, you look at value, again, this is what I do for a living, ours is real estate, one piece of property that you're, that you're doing that has multiple uses of possibility is different than another piece. You're talking about a corner that has some other use to it, possibly, you know, and a location, location is everything. A piece on a, on a bench, a piece of property that was along the bluff in Elkridge is going to be a lot more expensive than a piece that's in the.
And I understand that, so.
So be careful with when we're saying, well, we already have an appraisal and we have to get.
We have a reference point we have to work on.
And, and my thing to you is, do you believe that's a fair market value? Because if you do, I'm willing to sell it.
Absolutely, I paid $20,000 an acre, but because we're doing, so this as a whole is, is not just the value of the ground, it's a park in lieu of, it's a lot of fees that are going to help the city. That's how these things work. You're looking at it as if it's, if it's a finished piece of ground that, you know.
No, no, I'm not. I'm looking at it as raw land, specific raw land. And my complaint with this contract is, and you, you may have done everything you needed to, but our city planner and engineers hasn't involved us in this at all. We get this 64-page contract on Monday to read through and come here. And I'm saying there's issues with it that we need to discuss and renegotiate before we sign.
That's not true, Brittany. The, the value of the park, the appraisal's been here for a long time and it's been discussed months ago.
Actually, it hasn't been before.
Yeah.
It's been before council, a lot of these issues have, so it's not something we've just dropped all the same.
No, I'm just saying this contract.
The problem we got.
But we've got land values in here, we've got trail costs, we've got lots of costs in here with only one bid by one contractor. And here we are, my job is to represent the citizens of Elkridge and to make sure they're getting a fair shake in this deal.
Sure.
And one bid from one contractor, there's nothing to compare it to. We need to go back and do some more work before we can sign this contract.
So how do you, how do you provide your, like, for instance, your sewer thing you're voting on? If it's a bid, it's a legitimate bid from a contractor who's willing to do the work for that price.
And we get multiple bids.
Right.
That's how.
And so the only thing that could do is go down, right? If you're talking about the improvements, if I'm getting it from a professional landscaper, this is what I'll do this for. I mean, you're, you're acting like it, we're going, we're going to get, we're going to go on the highest number. It's not how it works. You go on the lowest number, right?
No, but this is money that you are going to put into a park and you no longer have to put into a park, so you're paying to this.
A park that I was being very versatile, I mean.
Right, I, so you're paying back to the city, so this is money that should be coming to the city and I want to make sure we're getting fair value for it. I mean, that's the basis of this, all of the issues with this contract. I think there needs to be multiple bids and discussions and negotiations over terms of this contract.
I think it would be really worthwhile to have you and anybody else on the council would like to sit through all of the values that we have brought to bear in this whole issue to make it viable for Dean.
issue to make it viable for Dean, so the city is not, is going to have additional dollars that we can put throughout the city. We're not going to have to hire another full-time worker to take care of that park. I mean, there are so many issues that we have addressed. These few pages is nothing compared to where we started. And maybe that's what we need to do. I've sat down with Shay how many times? And we have penciled it out dollar upon dollar upon dollar upon dollar upon dollar. End result, if he paid forty thousand, if we only gave him eighty thousand for that, the end result for the city, from my perception, sitting in these meetings, we're ahead. It is a value for the city far beyond a hundred thousand dollar price for two acres of land.
Okay, but here's the issue. Just because the city gets some money, doesn't mean that's fair to the city. The city should get fair value for their land.
We're getting.
And even if, even if we get fifty thousand dollars, okay, we're ahead by fifty thousand dollars, but that may not be fair to the city. And that's my issue, is I don't think these numbers are fair to the city. And I would be happy to come meet with Shay and Dean and whoever else we need to, to have these discussions and get this contract drafted.
See, what I'm saying is, there is compensation. It isn't just the hundred thousand dollars for two acres. There is additional compensation that is happening. There is a expanded trail and, that goes down along Elkridge Drive, that he doesn't normally have to pay for something like that. That's been put on his back and he's been willing to carry it. There are so many other issues. It isn't just that fair market value. You can say it's ninety thousand dollars cash, but we're looking at far more than just cash.
But we're crediting him for those things. We've got park strips and sleeves and.
Yes, we are.
We're crediting him for that, so.
Park strips and, you're not crediting me for those. I'm putting those in.
Like curbing and sleeves.
I'm putting those in because council asked for them. No, I'm not asking for any reimbursement. I'm saying, let's figure out, move this project forward. There is so much born on this project. It's sick. The road alone is about a million dollars. For a road, whose benefit is that road? Is it development? You will never pass that again in any city. It will never pass through the state legislation. Because you're not allowed anymore, they shut that off years ago, that the city come in and said, well, we want to, let's get this, and let's have the developer pay for this. If it's a benefit for the entire city, then it needs to be borne by the entire city, not just by a developer. A developer puts in the roads and the infrastructure that's pertinent to what it would be to develop those. A lot of these extras, we're just trying to get through it. I'm not asking for anything here. I got an appraisal that I was asked for. I called up an appraiser and had any issue with him. I went through and Shay said, get this. I got the bid here. I provided everything that was asked for me. And that, and it kind of, it's, there's a little bit of sickness to this with how much has been put into this project for benefit to the city of saying, oh, wait, there, you know, there might be an extra, even the park strips going down the lane, that's not part of my development. Look, it'll look good. It's not a huge issue to me, but I'm willing to do that. So I feel like I give and give and give and to become, to come to a meeting and say, well, this appraisal's, then get your own dang appraisal. You could have did that months ago. This thing has been in front of you guys for months.
And we, we have a similar appraisal, Dean. I'm not mad at you.
It's not a similar appraisal. It's a different piece of property, okay? You can't take a corner of a prominent area of the city that has a use of different than little lots down there in the middle of Elkridge Meadows that's hard enough to sell a lot for sixty thousand to begin with. Do you think that ground is worth this astronomical amount of time to develop it that's, you know, my electrical's probably eight thousand dollars a lot alone with strawberry electric. Development is about thirty-five thousand. You work those numbers and, and, and great, be an armchair quarterback and think that, oh, sell it to me. There's a lot more to the development than you guys know about. And the cost of this subdivision is insane. The benefit to the city with roundabouts and entry monuments and all the different things and donating the open space to help with storm drainage, putting park things down, I think personally, I've been over backwards to push this along and create a better community. Now, you could disagree with that if you want. I say you go through, let him finish, go through the developer agreement. You've got issues, talk about them, vote on it. If you vote to table it and do more research, great, but let's get through the rest of it. But I'm telling you right now, it's a little bit disheartening and sickening of the things that are asking me that I keep, okay, I'll do that. Okay, I'll do that. There comes a time when this park thing, it was an idea we had that, look, we had too many parks. At that point in time, we were going to be putting the upper park here. It came to my attention that, look, we probably need to look at that. We can't afford as a city. I'll look at it. I've seen this idea in other cities. We can do improvements in lieu of, and it creates a great fund to help improve developments. I'll look at it. I paid for all the engineering. I pushed everything forward. I give you guys everything you ask. And then we come to a meeting that you're ready, you know, yes, you had this agreement right then, but all these things have been discussed for a long time. That's my issue.
And I understand that. I understand you're frustrated and you're mad. You have to understand, my position is to represent the residents of Elkridge.
Well, Franky, when you're coming to me and saying, sell me the ground, I mean, that's ridiculous for a city council person to say. Ridiculous.
No, I'm just saying, if you really think that's fair market value, you should be willing to sell it for that.
Why wouldn't I say that? It's an appraisal I paid for. I paid for it. You didn't.
I know, but I'm saying if, if you really think that's the value of it, then you should be willing to sell it. And if you're not willing to sell it, that map might just probably not be the value of it.
I'm not going to sell it. It's part of my development. I put the park in. If, if that's the difference, I'm not going to sell it.
But I'm saying, we need, we need to negotiate and get improvements.
I'm the one that built the whole subdivision. You're going to go buy that? Well, I'm going to put all the roads in and the, and the roundabout and all the highway and everything in that's going in, the, you know, the seven-figure plus and all the stuff. I'm going, you're not doing that. I'll build a park first. I don't care. It's like the roundabout. I don't care. Make a decision and move on.
It's not about me buying it, Dean. It's about, this has not been negotiated, and this is about, we have one and one only bid on every number in this contract. Anywhere in this city, if we do a project, we do not get one bid. We get multiple bids.
You're not paying for this stuff. You're not looking at, right, what?
Can I say something? I think at the heart of all of this is you're questioning his integrity as a person, and that's, that's what's offensive. Like, I'm just sitting here watching this, and that's, he's offended because he's a fair businessman. He's saying, I've given you and done all of this. He does it for a living. If he, if he thinks it's fair, then get another appraisal. But that's a question of integrity.
And there was items, just so you know, there are items that came back from Shay to say, look, you need to look, we need to look at this number, and there's numbers that change in that as we had to relook at it. This isn't something that we just, that Shay just threw together. This is, how many hours do you think you put on with Shay? And how many times do we go back and forth and make sure we had everything in there? And everything that we thought that wasn't enough, we got another bid for. We got hard bids from.
We covered a lot of it. I, I just want to say, I know this agreement hasn't come to council. Why hasn't it come to council? Because everything hasn't been put together yet. That's the natural process of things. It comes before, the final agreement comes before council at the very end, right?
Right, so don't get mad at me for asking questions about it.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not mad at, and I'm not.
Or, I don't want you to be mad at me. I, I like you, Dean, and I'm not.
I find the veteran is stating your concern. Shay, Shay needs to speak.
And that has nothing to do with your integrity.
Shay needs to speak.
All I want to say is, is that all the way through this process, I have involved the council as much as, probably more so than we typically do. In the typical process, we go through the TRCs, a council member isn't involved in the TRCs. We go through planning commission, and then we bring it before council. In this case, this appraisal has been through the council. It was the council that asked for the appraisal, and then it came here, and we had a discussion about this a couple of months ago, in the council, and a lot of these other items have been before the council. It's separate items and discussed. I have, I've sat down with Dale on it, on multiple occasions, and we've, we've gone through the numbers and looked at it.
And we've discussed the low value of this as a council. So then it comes up in a contract, we need to discuss that. I'm trying to have a discussion here tonight because there's, this is the time that we discuss it, in an open session with the residents to discuss the issues of the contract.
Dale, you have a comment, please.
I was just, I was just going to comment that actually, actually, I had that, that same concern initially. And I, you know, I was just trying to figure out what this old park, and I did, I did get a bid, you know, from a landscaper, and it was quite a bit higher and so forth. But I have gone, actually, as you, as you look at the whole process, and then, then I did discuss and negotiate, I wanted to get the planer strips in the middle. I just felt like that was an enhancement, you know, for it. I kind of worked that out originally. You know, I'm thinking, this is low. I think maybe we ought to, ought to have three hundred instead of two hundred and fifty, you know. But, but the other thing that was brought up by Shay there also, as we, as we discussed it, is with those ten, ten lots, there's an additional hundred, you know, just for the impact fees that, that will come to the city from that for the sewer.
That's in your contract, yeah.
For what?
The middle, yeah.
It's there.
Other than the middle.
There's a hundred and some thousand dollars that would be an additional amount. And I had, had kind of resolved it to myself and decided, I think, I think we live with this. It's going to be two hundred and forty-four thousand. We did have that landscaper bid that his was broken down, and I felt like a couple of the areas were a little low. He said he had, had specific contracts or bids on them there. So I think, and I had decided, and I think we're going to live with this. And I think that is part of negotiation and compromises that go on. But I, I don't think that you are, that that's not an unreasonable question to bring up. But I, actually, I did check a few other, I have, you know, the sun lots developer, and they, they bought that piece of property that's by, by Meadows, Meadows Phase One. And I was, when we were discussing that originally, you know, that, I think it's around sixty thousand. He said, well, you don't want to use my, our figure. I was asking, what would you buy that for? You know, and it's like Dean said, you know, he's twenty thousand, you know, it was like thirty-five or forty thousand an acre for raw ground, you know, down in, in that development that they're doing. And so, and, and the sun lots said, yeah, I think you're, maybe that's a little low, but it's, but I think you're in the ballpark out there. You said for raw ground, if you're looking at raw ground. And it is a little, you know, depending on the location and stuff. So that kind of, I kind of addressed it, I think, a little bit then. And it's, it's possible, but, you know, if we were kicking it around, negotiating, you know, there's a, there's room for another five or ten, or something in there. But.
We got it in there.
Yeah.
Donations already there.
But I, I funny, you know, I came to, I was thinking, you know, originally, we'd discussed it.
Yeah, we discussed it.
We were slow.
You know. Now, you know, I've, I've been involved in this muddy mess almost since day one because I've been involved through this whole process. Dean is doing things like he said. If we had a developer come forward today and said, and the city told him, you got to build a brand new road, a new entry to our city, they'd tell us to go flip and fly right. They would. It would never fly, we would be bearing a hundred percent of that cost of that road, even in a PUD setting. Second item, okay, there's, we're going to pick up almost a hundred thousand in impact fees. We're going to get, right now, based on our current tax rate, three to five thousand dollars more a year in property tax revenue. These people are going to be hooked into our systems, helping pay to maintain and cover the cost of appreciation of the water lines, sewer lines, roads, snow removal. They're going to be contributing members of our community. The other thing too here, you know, even down to the appraiser on this, I have worked with this particular appraiser. I've seen his paperwork, his appraisals come across my desk a lot in the business that I'm in. And I can tell you right now, he doesn't inflate. He doesn't mess around. He doesn't, he's a good, honest man. I know his father personally, and I would never impugn his integrity. It's a fair market value. Second, in addition to that, I went and I looked up property values for just raw ground like this is right now in my neck of the city, just outside of the inner city, Dale. And, you know, right now, that, and it was just reassessed by the county because they came through and reassessed my whole little neck of the woods, and they're appraising that ground right now at about twenty-nine thousand an acre. That's the value that they're putting on. Now, it's not a full amount, that's a percentage of. So that tells me we're, we're with, plus or minus probably five percent at the end of the day. But what are we trying to accomplish here? One, we're trying to get this stinking albatross of more park space off of our neck. We're trying to come up with a way to move this thing forward so we can have a nicer, better community. We've got a way where we can take the impact fees. Now, instead of this other, instead of putting in more liabilities to us, we're going to be able to take those impact fees and put them to, to a higher, better use to improve things here at this park and down on the north end and make things better for everybody in the community. And, and I'm ready to vote and make this thing happen as it has been presented. I took the time to go through this entire thing, and I went back and I pulled out my old development agreements, the old ones, and I've looked at, and I'll tell you, you know, having gone through this, this issue of negotiating with Randy Young and then with the school, this has been a much more pleasant, and the finished product has been far better than it was with those individuals. And they actually had a lot more to gain out of it than he did, than Dean does. So that's why I'm here.
Any further discussion?
No, and let me just say, this is not about anybody's integrity. This is about when we as a city are going to do a project, we get more than one bid, and there's not any of that in this. And we didn't ask Dean for more than that. Dean gave us what we asked for. And I'm just saying, I think we need that. That's, that's my issue.
Any other discussion? Is there a motion?
I will make a motion that we approve the amended development agreement for Elkridge Meadows, phases five through ten.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
With the qualification, we go ahead as a city and do what we should have done to begin with. You're right. We screwed up.
That's why we're here.
I'm not necessarily saying you screwed up.
No, we did. So you're saying, you get that, is that, is that the only primary thing you're looking at? Is it getting appraisal?
Well, which is an appraisal going to cost us?
Yeah.
Five hundred bucks?
Fifteen hundred for a lot of appraisal. There has to be a motion then that we get the appraisal and spend that money.
We just saved it on that road up there that we did for fifteen or twenty.
We still have to make, make the motion. Someone will make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we get appraisal on the one point nine four, one point nine six acres down in the Elkridge Meadows, phase five through ten land, park land that we're, sorry, that's a confusing motion. Let me start up.
Do you want a single appraisal, or do you want multiple appraisals so you can be fair?
What do we want?
We need at least one offsetting appraisal.
Well, I, if you're going to make the argument that one isn't good enough, two isn't, you got to have at least three. Because it's the same reason that two of us can't pass them. So you got to be prepared to spend the extra money. I think we're stepping over dollars to save a few times, in my opinion, so.
That's part of the process. And I don't, I mean, does that change anything with the park strips going? I mean, because there was other things that were part of that when it was, but we're not, you know, there was some concern with Dale. I said, well, Dale, let's, he really wants to put those parks to come. Are we going to bid those out and take those off of this also? Because I think that would be only fair. I mean, I, why, I shouldn't have to add anything to this project whatsoever. I think I've done, you know, when that school was negotiated, they, they don't have to do anything. Their, their whole deal is like, who negotiated that thing? They don't have to put, they don't have to contribute on any road fronts that they have. The highway, nothing. That's all on me. So, you know, we're going to.
There's no thirty-year offsite reimbursement for the half width plus nine on that road like in, some of this other stuff.
Exactly.
There is like a, aren't you trying to get, when the school comes in, trying to get reimbursed half of the road?
No, you didn't.
In the agreement?
I can. It wasn't in the agreement when.
Because it wasn't in this.
Like I said, he's been more than fair.
No, it was.
Well, no, because I was going to say, in here.
It was brought through the council that it didn't have to be paid and they approved it.
And, and this is why I go through these agreements so thoroughly, is because back in two thousand and five, when this started, things were not done that should have been done. Yeah, but Shay is a professional, and he has really analyzed this agreement.
Now, I just want, I just want to say something about the school, if you don't mind. When they, when, and this is, when that, when that was negotiated, and that land was negotiated to sell, if you look at that agreement.
at that agreement, it's, those guys got a huge freebie on that. They did have to pay that water fee, but other than that, and they were credited, all this, all this property was credited to Rand, it wasn't Randy Young at that point, who was the second person that, it was sold through the second person.
Nelsonheim or?
It may have been. But anyway, the, the developer at the time received a credit for selling all that land, received a credit as open space, for selling all that land to the school. The school wasn't required to put the roads around, around the, there's some roads that they're required, but they weren't required to put part of Elbridge Drive in. They, they weren't required to, to pay into anything else. And, and I'm saying, I'm saying this personally, if you look at the timing of when that was sold, this project was bankrupt. Those guys went in, they made this real quick deal to sell that, so the developer personally collected a bunch of money off of it because he was losing the whole project.
So that's here and there, and it's the past. My question is, if you think about this, really, I don't care, I mean, me, it's about, none of this stuff moves forward, you might as well take off of the, um, whatever else be, the minute preliminary flat, because the minute preliminary flat, you can't approve that because it approves with lots of separate parks, so we need to table all that. But, question is, you want to pay three grand for a couple more appraisals, whatever you think you need to do? Do you want to go back and take the park strips going up and bid those out? That's probably fifteen to twenty thousand. I mean, I'm all, if you're gonna push me in a corner, then I'm going to go back and it's gonna be, yeah, okay, let's, we'll go toe to toe and say, I'm only gonna do the absolute minimum of anything I have to do. I have no more money to spend on this project. Look at lot values, do the math. It doesn't work.
So my question, we get two more appraisals, we spent three thousand dollars. Does that change anybody's vote? If the appraisals come in higher, are you still gonna require a renegotiation with Dean and his development? He's put in everything else he's already put in? I can see where it's gonna go if we do just what he's saying. We won't have to worry about, we can just, we'll just go ahead and put in a park. It could easily go that way just that fast.
It'll be cheaper and easier for Dean to put a park in than we'll get.
Way cheaper. Thirty thousand dollars just to put the park strips in. So where do you put that value? Where are you gonna sign that? I'm just saying, we'll get, that's okay, we get the appraisals, someone make the motion, we'll get the appraisals. What will it change?
Okay, I'm gonna change my. Okay, then I'm gonna make another motion so that you can vote. I'll make a motion that we approve the amended development agreement for Elbridge Meadows Phases Five through Ten.
Is there a second?
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay. I think we need additional appraisals to know whether it's fair, and that's all. And when we get two appraisals, if they come in at that, great, then we.
Next. I don't know where we are.
Where are we?
Number eight.
Elbridge Meadows Phase Seven, final flat approval. It is conditioned on everything that we have just talked about. Is there any further discussion? Motion, please.
Included in the motion is for Seth Wade to be able to review the fire hydrants.
For placement.
Yes, so he has that to be part of the motion.
So, I move that we approve the Elbridge Meadows Phase Seven, final flat approval with the condition that the fire chief be involved in evaluating the fire, fire hydrant uh, situation.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Number Nine, Horizon View Farms Development Agreement. That's the.
That's the.
That takes into consideration the discussions we've just had.
So this, this is just to, just to remind you, just to remind you, last time you were asking about the, about the payment mechanism, the issue being making sure that the city isn't caught in the middle of that. Now, so, so the way this was set up in Salisbury's agreement is that with each home, he's, when the building permit comes in, he pays an additional four thousand dollars, a little, little more, more than that, to the city as part of the building permit. So with Dean's agreement, this, this is the mechanism saying, stating that this is how the city is going to reimburse Dean for that money and how that's going to happen. And basically, what's going to occur there is that, at the time the roundabout is built, is constructed and, and accepted, at that point, whatever money has been paid in from, from Horizon View Farms Development is then, is then reimbursed to, to Dean and to the, the developer for completing the, the roundabout. And then, as the additional funds come in from Horizon View Farms, on a, on a monthly basis, as those come in, the city will continue to reimburse those to Dean's until that Horizon View Farms is, is built out.
Did we, did we ever have a, a timetable on that, or is that any part of it?
Well, it's, it's based on, it's based on receiving the hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, so it's not, it's not, we're not, we're not doing it like a, I know what you're saying. You're saying typically on a reimbursement, you'd say, okay, well, there's a thirty-year limit on that or something like that. But this is just, this is just based on.
Dollar value.
On the hundred and fifty thousand dollars and the, and the build out of those lots.
You've got like three pla, three houses.
I think Dale was talking about, you know, what if it takes ten years?
Uh, for it to build out, thirty-two thousand.
And I think I'm over that, I'm okay with that. The only question, I know what I'm doing.
No, you're fine. It was.
In the contract, it says he's got two years with two one-year extensions, and if he needs more than that, he can come to the city, but it's as the houses are built, the money comes here and then it's reimbursed to Dean. And that was our issue last time we looked at this contract was, who's gonna front the money of this project? Is the city gonna have to pay for it as we wait and collect these fees from Salisbury? And so that's been taken care of now.
And I'm paying for that.
Yes.
And then, my only question is, the re, when the building permits come in, what, what point in time, is that distributed monthly, quarterly, as they, you know, how is the?
The contract says monthly, just distributed monthly as they come in.
So, so, just to go back on this too, I, when Phase, when Horizon View Farms Phase Two comes, comes in for approval, we, we have that, we've got those two-year extensions, but they actually have to request those extensions.
Yes.
Okay, it's not, if you look at code, it has to be requested. And so, and so they have to come before council. So if we do see Phase Two dragging out, and it, and they're two years out on it, on Phase Two, then it, then at that point, this gets totally renegotiated, this issue, because this is, this is really the outstanding issue if, if Phase Two is not completed in a timely manner, correct? Is that, I mean, does that, does that make sense? So, so you have the chance as a coun, you have a chance as a council when this comes forwards to, to just reevaluate and look at it, say, is, is this working or not? And if it's not working, you can, you can, you can state, this isn't, this isn't working, or we're, we're gonna go up against this, this bill limit, and it, and this has to be resolved at this point, or else we won't move forward.
For Phase Two, right? You're, you're, your hammer is Phase Two.
Well, it'll, it'll happen with Phase Two, is what I'm saying.
So, I understand that, but that's not the way the contract's written. There's nothing in the contract saying if the phase is not completed within these two years period, all those payments are due immediately upon the end of the two-year period plus a two-year extension. There's nothing in the contract requiring that type.
No, correct. Correct. Because, because the issue is, is if they, if they go up to the end of that two years, at, at that point, their development has, has expired, they have to come before council and, and request the extension. And so, as, as that extension comes forward, that's when we negotiate that issue, if, if that happens. That's, that's why you have, that's why you have extensions in the code, and have, and they have to bring them before council, is so that the, so the council can reassess. And at this point, at this point, basically, it's saying that, that they're gonna pay in with each building permit, and it, and once they reach a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, all that's paid out, it's done.
I know, and that would, I understand that. That was my concern, is that Dean wasn't, he cannot be repaid for a very long time period. And that's why I thought we should put in there a time period on payments, a maximum time period.
Your issue that brings, what's really hard with these agreements, and Shay, you're correct me wrong, your only, so right now, you've collected because it's part of the, the whole building permit. And so, no, you can't have your building permit unless you pay this amount. The only other thing you have there beyond that, 'cause it could go past the two or four, and I'm okay, just so you know, I'm okay with it. I mean, these happen all the time. The only thing that can, the only other thing you have to say, okay, make them do it, is before you approve the second phase. Once you've approved the second phase and he starts on that, there's really nothing that can be done, it's, I mean, it passes through, it's with that lot as long as that lot's there, and I'm, I'm okay with it.
That repayment stays with the hand.
Yeah.
Right.
And it could, could go a long ways, I mean, but those are your only tools, mechanisms to say, okay. 'Cause it's really hard to go back and say, I don't think you have anything you can say, well, write a check today.
Well, yeah, but that was my, that was my concern for you, of having to carry that amount of money for.
Right.
Who knows how long.
Yeah. Any further discussion? Motion.
We all make a motion to approve the Harris.
Let's see, Ryan.
Right.
Number Nine.
Number Nine. We approve the Horizon View Farms Development Agreement.
Second.
I'll second.
Ryan, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number Ten, Harrison Heights Phase One and Two, Final Acceptance and Durability.
Okay, so, so Harrison Heights Phase One and Two were actually completed in, in May. Cody was out at the time with, with his treatments, and because of that, we, we kinda got a little bit behind with the accept, with issuing the final letter for acceptance. But, so we've put that letter before you. You'll notice the, the date on it is, is a date, what is it, May first, I believe, for the durability. That's just going back to the fact that that's when Cody made his final inspection and, and completed that review, so. I, we just need city council to.
Could, could, just confirmation.
And, and.
Any questions?
State that date is the.
Yeah, I just had a question. As a city standard, do we wanna make the durability period when we accept it, instead of?
The durability begins.
I mean.
The durability and, uh, period begins May first, and then it goes for the one year.
But that's what I'm saying, do we wanna make the durability period when we as a council accept and approve it?
That's normally how it's done.
And see, 'cause we're asking for back in May, it's now end of October.
Well, I'll, I'll tell you, we've, we've done some in the, in the past, that typically, what, what I've seen, I haven't been involved with all these, so, so I'm only looking at one or two that I've seen where the date that's been on it has been the date of the final inspection. And so, you've approved it at, say, the next city council meeting, but it, but the durability was stated that the.
Both cities, it is the final inspection.
That's fixed.
They, and they. They'll do the letter, this is the date, and then you approve that letter from that date. This is just a little bit late, obviously, but.
Yeah.
Motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Harrison Heights Phase One and Two, Final Acceptance and Durability, create effective, supposed to be May first, May first, two thousand and fifteen.
Second.
I second it.
Second by Dale. All those in favor?
Aye.
unanimous, thank you. Number Eleven, Water Allocation for Harrison Heights Phase Five, and why don't you over Phase Seven at the same time?
Okay, so. So, so Phase, Phase Five, Harrison Heights Phase Five, so there's, the allocation for the water for that phase is eighteen point two nine one acre feet. At that, at that point in time, Dean has available to him eighty-four point four three nine acre feet, so this would be subtracted off of that. So he's got plenty of water in the city available for, for the allocation for that phase, so recommend the allocation of eighteen point two nine acre feet of water and list the water out in there. And then, with Harrison Heights Phase Seven, so now, if Harrison Heights Phase Five is allocated, then Harrison Heights Phase Seven is, there's sixty-six point one four eight acre feet currently, and ten point one three three acre feet would be allocated from that. So we recommend, recommend the allocation of the ten point one three acre feet of water for Harrison Heights Phase Seven.
Is there a motion to allocate water rights as defined by Shay?
I'm.
Go ahead.
But he needs her.
Yeah.
Are the water rights coming from the River, the Monique?
I'm trying to remember.
The Elbridge City, is the Elbridge City?
Well, it's, so.
I was trying to see if they're transferring from the North Jordan Irrigation Company.
But they've already been transferred.
They've already been transferred.
Just by the water right number, okay.
Yeah, they're already, yeah, they're already in the city.
Okay.
So the eighteen point two nine.
Yeah, so, I make a motion that we approve eighteen point new, eighteen point two nine acre feet of water for the Harrison Heights Phase Five subdivision from water right number fifty-nine dash fifty-eight eighty-six.
Second.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Motion for Phase Seven, please.
I'll make a mo.
I'll roll, Brittany.
Yeah, might as well go. I'll make a motion that we allocate ten point one three three acre feet of water for Harrison Heights Phase Seven from water right number fifty-nine dash fifty-eight eighty-six.
Second.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, thank you. Number Thirteen. Sewer project. I get poll vote from the council. I remember who. We, we got a poll vote to be able to request to ratify the vote for the sewer project, to allocate the funds to your vote on that sewer project. We just now need to go through each individual council person and express your vote in that case.
Be good to just refresh if we got the, the contract.
The con, the wording of the contract will be a second level, and you want to read social, there's gonna be two. One was to, the first one was to, uh, propose that we put out to bid the contract for parts A, B, and C, so that we could get votes in it. I mentioned it was an A and B, so we're putting together a contract that is an A, B, and C. An A was going to be from the roundabout location, I mean, basically down to Elbridge Drive. And then, part B would have been from that same location back up to Olympic Lane. And so that was what we, we proposed to do. We had dollars in the, uh, in the account, appropriate accounts, the, uh.
That's sort of, that's sort of.
Anyway, and so that was, that was what this was about. So, my concern with Dale, your vote was?
I, I was in favor of putting it out for, for we had to get our bids on it.
And Brittany?
In favor to get a bid?
Nelson? In favor? Brian? Hannah Paul?
I was in favor with those items concerned.
Yeah, and we have addressed those. Thank you. So, that motion has been ratified. The next one is to ratify the poll vote for the awarding of the bid to TARDIS Construction Company. And their bid came in at.
One sixty seven, sixty.
One sixty.
One sixty-five, six, seven, one, three, five.
Yes. And that information was sent forward to the. And that information was sent forward to us.
And that, that, and that does both, both sections.
And, yes. And there is an additional section that actually will take $10,000 off of that, am I correct? Is that right?
Not a section, the lateral, the laterals going in is on paying for those laterals.
So Dean will be paying for a price of $10,000 out of that. So to ratify that vote, let's just work back the other direction. Your vote on that, awarding of that bid?
I think, I think when we talked about it, I was in hospital.
Yes.
On a bid.
I think that's.
And, yeah, and I. I just wanted to, it's, I forget, was it the middle bid? The engineering estimate was a lot higher than any of the other bids, which concerns me. Because then you start adding on afterwards, which that agreement's a lot.
Yeah, and then it always does, but they have to be approved to afford.
But it was a considerable amount.
Yes. The two, the two closest bids, who I think were $6,000 apart, no, $3,000, and the top, bottom three were $10,000 apart. And then there were some others that went significantly higher. One even approached the contractors, I mean, the.
And we checked on the recommendations of the contractor and other work that they've done.
We went beyond the letters of recommendation that were provided to us. And so, we, we, I felt very comfortable with it. And I've since met with them, we had a pre-construction meeting. Quite impressed with this group so far. And then we started digging tomorrow, so.
Okay, so my, my vote was, I was in favor. I just had a concern about the difference.
And Brian? I am going to abstain partisan.
I'm in favor.
No, I was in favor.
Okay, so for yes and one abstain, Danielson?
One question I had on that, where that is, is coming down from Olympic, going down to that corner. It was, it would sure be nice to get, probably better put in.
Would, but who's going to pay for it?
Well, I, I wonder if you approach, is it Lee?
Why, not in the peanut gallery.
Does Lee, not probably.
There's two, there's two owners there.
Two other owners.
So the case, I think, they better.
He knew that, y'all are going to have to put it in sometime. It would be good to at least approach them and ask them. Can't help to, hurt to ask a question.
You're not going to get either one of them to do it without, without some type of project. They're going to benefit, not going to happen.
I do think Dale, but, you know, with, at least Harrison Heights, I think that's.
Yeah, yeah, there's some possibilities already that thrown out, but they're down the road. And that would then finish that off. Thank you for your votes. Then real quick, city celebration, shall we just put that off? Or do you want to?
Well, I think, given the fact that we're going to be you and Dale and four other individuals will be just making some other decisions related to the city celebration, I think that that, I don't know that it's so urgent, we've got to make the decision now because we're missing deadline. I mean, we do have time on our side, but I think that in the meantime, we need to talk to residents, all of us, and get feedback from them. Even if we're not the one making the decision, it certainly passes along.
Okay, so on that basis, we move ahead. Exploratory well. $165,000 to $175,000. The dollars are in place. It's an option for us, but we have to be able to commit that we're going to move beyond that to the commitment if the well proves well. Good, gooder? Well, we're going to have to have that obligation on the part of the council to say, yes, we're going to move forward with the production well at some point.
Well, I don't know how we can have a capital facilities plan, approved developments, and we have this whole timeline of things that are going to happen. And then just stand back and say, well, we're going to wait until we get some development in this area to go ahead and drill a well, because at this point, if we do that, we will be rationing water like Payson, El Salem, and everybody else. We need to get, we've got the money to drill the exploratory well. We know based on what did Aqua Engineering, can't remember his name now, Craig, Craig Neely. The information that he presented to us in our capital facilities plan indicated that we're going to have to drill one and probably a second one unless we can get everybody to quit using water outside. So we're, we're going to have to drill this well. And I think right now, the least expensive option for the city, until we get some growth and we get some additional revenue coming in, is to go ahead and drill it right down where we're, we're talking about on the northwest corner of the park and make that happen. And let's get that, let's get the ball rolling and get some additional redundancy in our system. I don't know that there are going to be any residents who are going to throw a fit, that we're trying to be proactive at creating some additional redundancy that needs to be there. You know, at this point, it's going to benefit the entire community. The time may come where it won't benefit some of us on the south end because the pressure zones and where the water will ultimately be routed. But if it's down there, then they're not taking their water from the other end of town all the way to the other end. So it's, it benefits.
Any other discussion?
So if we have two wells on the bottom and the well up top goes out, are we going to have?
We still will be producing probably three times more.
But do we have the pumps to get it to the houses on the south end?
There's a way around it.
That will be part of the, the system that they've already engineered or given a basic concept of where.
We'd be looking at putting a, a set of booster pumps in from, I believe they're from this tank here, because this would pump into this tank.
Up to the hillside.
So basically what it would do, it would pump in the, if I understand it right, it pumps in the existing line and, and turns the pump line, or turns the, the existing line that's now flowing downhill into a pump line to fill the, the upper tank if, if those types of situations occur.
So then all of the residents would have water?
There would be, yes, except for any, and even, even development up on the south end would still be benefited by that well down there. Although we might need at that point, depending on population, we may need a third. So, motion, unless there's more discussion.
I was just, I was just agreeing with, with Brittany as far as wishing, you know, it, it would be nice to, to have a deeper well up on the top and just be able to have a lot less, less cost there. But the, the three-phase power, there's nothing even close there, I guess, at this point, is there?
Clear at the bottom of the Loaf Canyon. Royce, you?
The mayor and I said, as we sat in all the meetings, we kept saying, think outside the box, we want to go high. But it just, as we kept analyzing the obstacles of going high, it just makes sense for the first step in redundancy to do this one now. And then we can readdress that as we go forward.
There, there's a reason why Woodland Hills drilled their well where they did. Because it wasn't high and it was because of the availability and the cost around the power. You know, I mean, I don't, unless we have some major industrial development on the south end of town, I don't even see three phases ever getting there.
Oh, you don't know Strawberry Electric very well. You'll have, you'll have plenty of power.
We'll have plenty of power, but somebody else will be paying for the cost.
Let's make the motion quick.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the expenditure to go ahead and drill an exploratory well. Do we have to get bid on that?
It's, it's already, well, right now, the, the estimate is $165,000 to $170,000. The guesstimate is it will probably come in less, but we are holding high.
And we will get it, right.
But then we have to put it out to bid and say, yeah, so you're, you're permitting a move part with the bid process. Okay, then that's, I'll make a motion that we approve the bid process for an exploratory well to be drilled.
Second.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Thank you. You talk, Kerry, Everbridge Alert System, can we just vote quickly to move that forward and move from Parlant to Everbridge?
I will make a motion that we change our alert system from Parlant or Blackboard to Everbridge at $536 for the first, I guess we need to.
That's, that's an annual fee.
Annual fee after, after the first year.
Yes. Okay, second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Quickly, department reports, I want to go over company real quickly. The only, Dale for sure, you two possibly. We will have a, I'm sorry. Let's get some stuff from Payson on sure. Okay. Yeah, we can talk about that in just a minute if you'll help us with that. We did a planning session with the new council last year, or not, last year. We're going to, we're going to do a combined council planning commission Saturday again sometime in January. We've got to start looking at our master plan. We're overdue in reviewing that, refining it, redefining it. And I've already asked the planning commission, please start reviewing that. And for those three of you who may still want one and two of you who still may be here, I'm just going to throw that out. But that will happen in January. I want the council to be heavily involved with that sooner than later. Real quickly, High Sierra was paved on Saturday. And if you'd like to drive up there, you can take a look.
It's a good thing we got them to do that. There's a lot of dirt they moved and he contoured it the way that it ought to be.
I was surprised I was starting to push.
Can we, can we, I'd like to just say one thing.
Please.
I've got some strong feelings about this agenda format change. And I'll tell you where I'm coming from. I, what I think this goes to is more than just an administrative change. I think it goes to the actual responsibilities of the council. When we come here as a council in a meeting, I think it's important to listen to what each of us is saying about our own areas of responsibility. I think it's for two reasons. One, it's a, it's a time for accountability. We're saying to the group, this is what I've been doing, accomplishing through, through the public works department. But these are areas that I've pushed for and I think, you know, I've identified as areas of responsibility and the council can, can then agree or disagree with the, the, the direction that we're trying to go. And the other thing is that it, it, it gives us an idea of what the rest of us are doing. It's important to get it from the horse's mouth, I think. Now, can Cody do a better job of doing this for us? Probably, because he's involved in it on a day-to-day basis. But we have an accountability and we come each, each meeting and say, you know, here's my report on the accountability. Tonight, I had, was planning on coming, I, I guess I didn't read it closely enough from the left hand. But I had the, the responsibility of coming and saying, you know, I've been working on this thing for three years. Well, the guy that was supposed to speak for all of us tonight is not even here and hasn't been here much of this year. Now, a lot of it is not his fault. But the truth of the matter is, if we are shortchanged on that responsibility, it takes away from some of our responsibilities as council members. And that's why I feel strongly about it. It may seem like a, an agenda, you know, something that is not that important. But I think we, I guess what I'm trying to say is, when I know that I'm responsible for a particular area, it behooves me to go to Cody, you know, before I come to this meeting and say, how are we doing? You know, and so forth. Instead of just coming and listening to Cody say, well, here's what we did.
And that's what will happen.
But it's a change in responsibility and it's not a subtle change. And what I'm saying is, if we allow us just to change, I think we're, we may end up having just the opposite effect. It may, it may diminish us as a council and, and our effectiveness. Just a thought.
Well, you know, the, the one thing I like about, about this, of having them report to the council on what projects that they have completed is that it's in this public, public arena plus, then you can ask questions at that time. You know, we could, we would have time for discretion, would we not?
And I would hope they will do exactly what you've said, that you will still get with the department's heads, whomever they are. And you already will go through this information, but the, the, the reason I've gone this direction is getting the work done is on the head, on the heads and shoulders of our the people who are hired to do this. And I don't want to diminish what the council can add to. I hope the council will continue to add to. Brian has done a tremendous amount, I think, in terms of overseeing what's going on with roads. We've had road projects, we've, we've had plans for five years out, 10 years out, those kinds of things have happened.
Well, at, at the time, then you can ask Cody, okay, do you have, do you have a schedule for when you're going to be crack seeding these roads? You know, when they're, he's reporting, okay, what about, I, I would envision that type of a, they report, but you could also discuss different projects, what we, what we're going to do over there.
What if he's not here like tonight?
Cody wastes a lot of time.
But that, right now, he understands, if he were not sick tonight, he was told he was to be here at every council meeting for those reports.
Well, he's sick most of the time.
Well, and he can have come sick.
He's going to have to account for that here sometime.
Well, so, you know.
I understand the point.
It's, I think it's very important that we, we look at this thing as what our role and responsibility is. And it goes back to things like, well, you know, is the council, in the past, the council had responsibility for this city celebration. Who's responsible for it now? I mean, it's been taken away from the council. And so is the planning commission and some other things. Economic development has basically been really, so I think we need to, to think about what we as a council, our responsibility and role is, especially with the new council coming in. And I, and I don't think we can go over these things lightly and just say, well, you know, this makes, maybe makes sense. You know, I've heard that, that Pace and City does it this way, but they have an entirely, entirely different government organization over there. They have a city, a city manager who manages the, the people in the city. And the mayor is kind of like the senior council member over there. Well, it, it might work for them, but on the same token, I, I've heard some fairly interesting rumors about what's happened in the election over there.
It has happened.
Okay, so, couple of things. I, I think that this is, I've, I've seen this work in Payson. I've seen it work in Eagle Mountain. I've seen it work in Salem. These are all cities where I've attended their council meetings. I sat on another board. Some of us have other additional responsibilities that are assigned to us, like for example, Paul with, with our council is over Soma. Dale is over the Fire EMS. I'm over SESD. Those are areas where Royce isn't going to come in and give a report on that. Cody's not going to. That's where we would come in and we would give our, our report on those specific duties. I think one of the things that this does do is it drives and it drills down and it provides for some additional accountability. And one of the biggest challenges we've had as a council and as a city is documenting whether or not somebody has done what they are supposed to be doing. And if they're coming in here and they're making a presentation and they're telling us this is going to happen next week and it doesn't happen, it's a matter of public record. It's now in their file. And if we get to a point where we've got a series of things that aren't happening the way they need to, you know, we've, we've got a rock solid case. a, a rock solid case, I don't know that it's necessarily a, a diminishment of our responsibilities, you know, you look at the city celebration, that wasn't taken away, that council member just said, I can't do it, I don't wanna do it, and just dumped it on the rest of us.
But that's.
And so, as a council, that's, it's, it's upon us to, you know, and, and we're working towards and we're making improvements, and one of the reasons that this is being implemented, in my opinion, is to improve the process, provide additional accountability, initially, when I saw this on the, the prior agenda, what did I do, Mayor, didn't I call you? Because I was concerned, and we had a very lengthy conversation, and, and I'm, I'm comfortable with what this is designed to do. I think we need to do this in, in Pace's meetings, just because you've got the public works director that comes in and says how things are going, it's also a time, like, like you said, where we, and, and Dale also, where we can ask additional questions and say, well, what about this, or, you know, I heard from a resident, and we've got this major blowout over on, on Salem Hills Drive and, and Hillside, where we've got big sections of the road, I'll have to send you the pictures of that, where, where it's literally, I mean, we're, we're talking chunks bigger than my tablet, that are just breaking off on the side.
But it's important to me to know what Dale is doing, because it affects me with the roads.
And, and that's what he can.
And it's all interrelated, but if, if he isn't given the opportunity to come and report each week, I'm flying blind, I have to hear it through Cody, and he may or may not have the same indication or kinds of things that, that Dale would say, that, that I need to know directly from, because I work, this may be the only time that we have to converse with each other in terms of how we're doing it, because we don't have separate meetings where we sit down and say, you know, it all has to be public.
I think, and I can understand Eric's concerns here, I think it would provide better integration between the city council and the administrative staff, which I think communication there could be improved, but I think we're still responsible, if Cody's not here or the administration, administrative staff is supposed to report on it, I think we're still responsible to report on it, and we have the obligation to talk with them and communicate with them, and they know, and we're aware of each other, but I don't think if Cody comes in and says something, that you can't say, add something to it, I mean, I don't think.
That's what I'm hoping with meeting days.
That's what I think needs to be a part of that, is that we, we've got something to add, we add that to it, we've got some questions.
Not just a situation where we're turning it over to them and we just sit there and listen.
Not at all.
No, because honestly, the way that our.
I'm not sure that was the extent.
The way the code is written, honestly, the mayor could take and pull it all from us, and he would be completely within his rights, he'd be crazy to do that, but he could do it, he could do it, and it wouldn't be the first time that it's happened in the city for a great time, so, but I, I think that this is definitely moving in the right direction, and I wholeheartedly support it.
We should get our, oh, the, Chad Cracks Seal, have you talked to Cody about when it'll start by chance? Mid-November.
I, I talked to him, he said he had, that it, he was planning to do it in October, which.
He had hoped to be, had hoped to.
Have the equipment until, into November, and as long as the weather, snow doesn't
hold, that's the better time to crack seal, because everything expands.
Which crack seal?
Just any, throughout the roads, all of the roads.
It was specifically in the reading and the attachments that we're talking about crack seals.
We're gonna do crack seal this fall. And the reason we do that is that the cold allows the roads to expand, I mean, they contract, so the, the gaps widen, you can fill them, and then when, then in the spring, they come back out and they're, it's a better seal by far, and so that's why they do it in the fall or early spring, if we get stuck with snow, early snows, we'll have to move it.
I just like the accountability of being able to ask him and pinning down on that, okay, get, get a date, you know, get us an exact date here on when you're gonna do it, and I, I like that, I think we need, we need it there.
I think so too. There is a, the truck should be here, our back truck should be here, maybe as soon as the end of next week, but possibly the week after that, and that will allow them throughout the winter to do vac, a lot of vacuuming.
Is that the new one we're buying?
Yes.
You finally got one?
Hundred and fifty thousand. That was in that ballpark, so, that was for the truck.
That was the one we had projected though.
I think that there's gonna be.
For the sewer back truck, that's what we projected, was around a hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay. As I mentioned earlier, I am working, trying hard to work with some various agencies, groups, organizations, administrations, to get them on board with our city, we will write up a declaration that we're gonna take to the county and say, we want this road widened between Salem Canal Road and.
Eleven two hundred.
Eleven two hundred, it's county's road, and here's why, because of this issue, this issue, this issue, and we're going to take it, and I'll take it to Woodland Hills, to Pace and to Salem, to the school district, there was one other group that I wanted to identify.
Probably, I have the charter schools.
Including the charter school.
Because they're, they're kinda separate from the school.
And in the process, we're gonna see if we can't save, and we really need to realign Salem Canal Road to right angles instead of this offset angle, if we can, that may not happen, but if we can, we can't get it to happen until it's in a budget, and we're hopeful to do that by the end of November, I'm hoping to get that much accomplished, and I'll let you know where we're at with these meetings, I've been hoping several, that, that we have a new public works director for the county, the old one moved from Woodland Hills, who seemed to get all kinds of extra favors, and he's gone to, to St. George, and so the new, I'm comfortable with Glenn Tanner taking his place, Glenn's a good man. Anyone else want to?
Just real quickly here, I know there's been a lot of question, and this has been discussed in some of our other meetings here, about our agreement with Pace and the sewer rate increase, and they were gonna put a meter in, and then we didn't know if they had, well, I just got pushing the issue and finally got an audience with Dave Tuckett and another city staffer, and found out that they actually had put a meter in the line, they had numbers, but they weren't really excited to share them because it was in our favor. Anyways, what we have here, the first page, there's some different options, most of these abbreviations aren't gonna mean a whole lot to you, but it's, these are different figures for a regional plant expanding the existing one, and Salem coming in, and so on and so forth, it's probably gonna be us and Woodland Hills and Pace at this point, Salem has some differing engineering costs that make it financially unfeasible for them to come join the ranks with us, so, with that in mind, if you flip to the next page, down under item six, there's two different figures there under B and C, this is taking the money that Pace has to pay for the bond for the line that was run, the money that we've paid in, the amount of money they collect from us on an annual basis, and impact fees, if we were covering a hundred percent of the cost under the old rate, there would be a shortfall there, but that's not taking into account the fact that they ran a line for their benefit as well. Item C shows if we were responsible for fifty percent, and they actually made about eighty, almost eighty-two hundred dollars a month off of that agreement to their good, and that does not reflect the fifteen dollar month rate increase, what that means to us is this, based on the information on the front page, if they expand and improve their existing facility, it looks like we probably won't get another rate increase to cover the cost of that, so that, that's, that's kinda where it all falls.
We are not being subsidized.
We, we're definitely not being subsidized.
By Pace, as was stated in.
In, in some of their, yeah, so I, you know, I pushed this issue, they actually, it got to the point where they called a meeting and called in all of their candidates that were running for office and sat down and went through this line by line, and they laid it all out and said, we've got to have the right information out there, because this issue will be addressed next year in some shape, size, form, manner, and so, it's a lot easier to work through this if they're all on the same page.
So they're looking at primarily, they were looking at expanding the existing one or.
That is probably what will happen at this point, unless, unless Salem, Salem was gonna have another engineering firm, take a look at the numbers, and if that number came in and aligned more closely with the engineering numbers that Pace had, then there may be.
A combined.
There may be, but I, based on the numbers that I've seen, you know, I'd be really hard pressed as a councilman to vote to spend more money based on a report that was put in front of me by one engineering firm, so.
So, are we paying the correct amount?
Yes.
Now?
We are, and one of the things that will probably happen going forward, as they expand the facility, will probably look at a, an adjustment in the way that we pay based on a metered flow.
A flow rate.
So, it's kinda like what we do with the, the garbage right now, we pay a fee to Republic based on the amount of weight of material, but we still collect a base rate from our residents to cover that cost, so we would still have a, a rate, but then we would pay them based on what was metered and flowed down the line, and then what that would do is that would put us in a better position going forward, probably twenty, thirty years out when they have to completely rebuild a new facility to meet the EPA requirements, where nobody's gonna be pointing fingers saying, we paid for you, it's just cleaner and easier.
And I, there is, there, we're even, I'm considering, and someone else suggested that we put in our own meter so that we can have a double check on that.
So, and that's, that's something that I've discussed with Cody, and, and I think we have it within our budget.
We do.
Because right now, we're just saying based on connection and not on flow.
Yep, so.
Anything else?
I, I did have one other item.
Go ahead.
Just more of an FYI, next week, this was scheduled a long time ago, I didn't know when it was gonna be, ironically, this is the day after election, but in order for me to serve on the SESD board, there's a certification I have to have on an annual basis, and it's the day after the election, and it's our, but they've already paid the fees and I'm going to it, so.
We take him off that board.
You know what, unless you wanna, like, make the fake ID and go and certify and go.
Yeah.
Just, just to report on, on Parks, I think, the one thing that we did, we, we, we bought sixteen new trees, the two inch, a few of the inch and a half, part, we planted, planted the thirteen home at the, around the playground area, you look at it now, it does look a lot more treed and landscaped, we do have that, we did get approved for the grant, four of the seventy-four hundred dollars, which will allow us to buy about forty-five to fifty trees total, that has to be completed by next May, end of May, so, we do need to, one question I add, if, I, I do think that we probably will need to, if we're revamping the, the budget, doing any revamp for the sewer, for things, then, you know, I think that there needs to be, there's no money, and we, this is a matching grant, so you have to pay the fifty thousand, you know, upfront, well, actually, we'll, we'll do part of it, in just labor and equipment and so forth, but at least we'll have to pay ten thousand of it, and then you recover, you get back the seventy-five, so, we don't have anything really in the budget right now to allow that, we took it out of the playground area to buy this, the budgeted item there, so, that's something we'll need to.
We shouldn't have that in the impact fees based on the new agreement that we struck.
But we need to put it in the budget, per se.
Needs to be put in the budget.
Money will come in.
To match for the.
We have, we're gonna have several issues that have to go in that in the budget.
Yeah, with that in mind, and so, just, and then I did meet with the Parks Committee, they had a, they had a South County Trails Committee, and they're doing this study to a corporation or something, is doing the, the study on it, was interesting, some of the designs, one thing they did was have a divided line on their, on their nine foot or their ten foot trail, that kind of defines it a little more, and it's not a super expensive thing, they are looking at primarily the, the backbone of it will be when they, when they put the canal.
Highlight canal enclosure.
Yeah, enclosure, the guy was there who's over that, and I was asking him, well, do you have any timetable, and he said, I'm not, oh, yeah, and he said, we're trying to get funding and trying to get input there, so, and then we're already tied in, Pace and City, I went to, I, I went to walk that, part of that, that goes, when you go up, up Bridge Drive to the end, and then there's the gate there, and let's see, that, that goes over to Fort May.
It's over to Fort May, yeah.
They're over to Fort May, you know, I, it'd be, I talked with Jill at Pace and City, they would be interested in getting a connecting trail from Elbridge to, they already have a trail in from Fort May, that's a very nice one, that comes from by the scout camp, and that would tie you into their trails going down the canyon, connecting it to their inner-city trails, so, some things are working on, need to be working on there.
Anything else?
I'm just curious, some of the trees that they planted, you type.
They had, we had the locust, we did eight of the locust, we replaced the ones that were, that were there, we did four of the autumn blaze maple, which is a, I really liked that one, but then we did, you know, the, the Forest Service, the guy was saying, you need to do a little more variety in that, we prefer, one of them, we, we did three of the Canadian choke cherry, which gives you a contrast in the color, and we did three of the paca or something like that, it's a vase-shaped one, that, that, talking to, you know, we've got a committee now, to get the Tree City USA, you have to have a, a city tree committee, and on that is myself, Cody, Lloyd, and, and Derek Peterson, who is Provost Cities' arborist, and what he told me, you know, we went through this book, he brought this book that had, they have it divided in a section for planter strips, then for, and then they have three different sections of recommended trees, and he said, what they, his recommendation is, is that, is looking at maintenance on those also, and this, this tree, he said, that, get that, the name of it, but it's an attractive tree, but he said, you plant it and you basically never have to, you know, trim it, trim it, and work with it, the other one, the, the other one that we were looking at, maybe, that's a columnar one, maybe going across the front of the park, that he said, that, it's that hornbeam, the hornbeam, and he said, that one is a great tree, you just plant it and let it go, but you'll never have to trim it, and so that was some of the things we were, but mainly, you know, we went, and, and we're in the process there now of looking at that for the trees that are required in the development, and kinda rewriting that with that landscape agreement, but the inch and a half, we decided to do an inch and a half on requirements for residential, we're having a two-inch for commercial, which, that does make a big difference.
Anything else? Let's move to the check register then, any questions, discussion about check register?
The KISL monthly fee, is that the program that we have, track roads?
No, that is our accounting software.
Oh, that's our accounting.
The whole system in the city.
Okay, so I had a question. What did, what did we pay to game time on page one, line, or it's check number one by six nine oh?
Yeah, for eight eighty-three sixteen.
And then, just the second item here, on our health insurance, clearly the city's health insurance costs have gone up, I found out today mine's being dropped, the next time this comes up, whoever's on the council, I think we need. The next time this comes up, whoever's on the council, I think we need to have our representative with local government's trust come in and present all of the options. And let's just take a look at it, because there's PHP, Altius, SelectMed, and I think one other carrier, but I, I think that the council, we ought to...
It's just coming up, so...
Okay, so when that comes, we need to take a good, hard look at it. In light of all the legislation changes and all these other things. I mean, I think we need to take care of our employees, but at the same time, if we can save a few bucks here from, from one plan to the other, maybe take a plan that makes more sense based on the number, the employees that are enrolled and their families. We need to do it. Because that, that's something we haven't looked at for a couple of years.
It's been about three years since we've done that.
So I, I, I just wanted to bring that up because I saw it on the script, so. Other than that, I mean...
And the, what was it, phase?
Game time. I know we had to get the base for that, for that dinosaur, but I wouldn't think it would be that much.
Is it like the, how much is it, the eight hundred?
Eight eighty-three.
That's what it costs.
That's what it was.
That's what it costs.
The dinosaur base. Double base, a double base. And, and we thought that it was paid for previously when we had, we've had that before.
Oh, yeah, it was down at the works drilling and our...
And so we did, I was pressending to get that installed. And they finally found, researched it, found that we didn't actually pay for a base. And so that's what that is.
The UtahRunning.com, do we know what that was for?
UtahRunning.com would have been for the city celebration for the fundraiser.
So we pay them to be able to use their website type people?
Yeah.
Is that...
That's, that's a typical...
And to kind of operate a program. To set hours, get registration.
Do all the registration and collect the fees and, and prices and stuff. Anything else? Motion to approve the check register and payroll for September twenty, August and September twenty fifteen.
I know that we approved the payroll for August and September?
Two thousand fifteen.
Two thousand fifteen.
Second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes, August fourth, sixth, and eleventh. Sorry that we're lots and lots of transition that was happening there. And it took a tremendous amount of effort to try and, ah, Melanie. A long, a long...
She's just ready to go along going on.
Side note, Breann has been added to our office staff and she's going to start heading up planning commission secretary. So she's handling the minutes on that, so. It'd ease a load on Melanie's plates and...
Yeah, we need that.
They look good, there was a lot of stuff discussed there. It was good to...
That was all the tax, hearing the public...
Corrections that would modify...
I, I had some questions, but they actually got answered during the agenda tonight, so...
Motion to approve those minutes for August fourth, August sixth, and eleventh, twenty fifteen.
So moved.
Second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody have anything else? Oh, that's right, thank you, Royce.
Meet the candidates, it's Thursday, sixty-eight. Some of them, when you hit this room, will have to be in the hot seat. And then are we, we're sponsoring an immunization clinic on Friday. Please tell your neighbors, we'll put signs out.
So what are the immunizing fours?
Look, if you need a flu shot, you go through your, your insurance. So they're coming up here and they have a list on the thing, we put it on the website.
It lists county.
It's county.
County.
And insurance is accepted, it's on there, so. So it's a free service provided by the county. The city's not paying anything for it.
We're not paying anything.
They just come here and, yeah.
We're just making it convenient for... Yep.
Maybe one quick, one quick note. We've had a few, we've had a few complaints come to the city, six or seven total, that we're sending out way too many notifications. Now, I understand the intent, when we first even talked about this, we were gonna get the sirens. I perceived, I tried to get the sirens like Woodland Hills has. And when we looked into that, there was too many problems with outdated equipment, getting replacement, getting repairs, and the cost was astronomical. And then we came with this because the emergency was the prime issue. We can't hear the siren and so Parlan came forward. We, we brought them forward, they'd made a presentation. But we have far more complaints than seven. Well, we never hear anything. We don't know what's going on in the city. So we're trying to be judicious, but this is, it would be foolish for us not to utilize a system that can inform the residents of basic functions within the city.
Can we have an opt-out if they wanna opt-out from messages and use their way that we can step that up?
So much nicer, because you will be able to go on and say, I only wanna be notified for emergency. But for other stuff, you can opt-out.
That, that will, that will honestly silence...
If, if...
Well, then you can choose how many messages you wanna get them on.
But you're required to go on there and opt.
Right.
Okay, but as long as it has that option, then...
It will silence those people if they will read the instructions to do it. Because we're not going to. They're gonna have to become proactive to understand the system. We'll put the information out on our website and in the newsletter. And so we just hope that people, we wish more people, we had someone called and complained because you didn't get notified. We had a, a phone number, but it wasn't accurate.
Yeah. You send, you send a text to a landline, it won't work.
No, they won't.
You know, you know, one thing, when I was reviewing these, that's the first time that I've really taken the time to, to look at the YouTube, the recording. But I was very impressed with the clarity of that, plus picking up, picking up the conversation. It actually does a good job.
And seeing this late at night.
In line for that, yeah, and he does. I appreciate that. And there's no excuse for anyone in the city who wants to know what's going on. They can, they can watch the whole city council as far as they, if they want to.